Good evening and welcome to the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of January 26, 2021. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Patron?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Nash?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items if they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items four through nineteen on the Consent Docket.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to place items four through nineteen on the Consent Docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Patron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item four, approval of the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority. Minutes? Item five, mayor's appointment of Olga Caulfield and Natalie Rocher to the Bicycle Advisory Committee; Adrian Francisco to the Development Oversight Committee for Tiff District Number Two; Dr. Alexander Holmes and Mayumi Windler to the Economic Development Advisory Board; Robert Volmer, Jim Griffith, and Sarah Bondi to the Environmental Control Advisory Board; Bill Scanlon to the Flood Plane Permit Committee; Siobhan Evans and Brent Swift to the Historic District Commission; Bianca Gordon, Megan Strand, and Jason Bingham to the Library Board; Jeff Cummins and Rick McKinnney to the Norman Housing Authority; Mark Daniels and Erin Williford to the Planning Commission; Sadie Oriana, Tom Sherman, and George Wesley to the Norman Forward Citizens Financial Oversight Board; Kevin Pipes, Doug Coverley, and James Chapel to the Norman Regional Hospital Authority; and Heidi Smith, Angela Stinal, and Loida Solomon to the Social and Voluntary Services Commission. Congratulations and thank you to all of you. Item six, submission of the Finance Director's Investment Report as of December 31, 2020. Item seven, submission of the monthly departmental report for the month of December 2020. Item eight, submission of the Development Oversight Committee for Tiff District Number Two annual report for the period October 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020. Item nine, bid, contract, and associated bonds with G&amp;L Sand Blasting and Coatings LLC in the amount of $79,400 for the Cascade Tower resurfacing project. Item ten, bid for the purchase of plant mix asphalt for the Street Maintenance and Stormwater Divisions. Item eleven, bid, contract, and associated bonds with Nash Construction Company in the amount of $69,633 for the ADA Ramp Repair Project, FYE 2021 locations, and adoption of a resolution granting tax-exempt status. Item twelve, final site development plan and final plot for Turtle Crossing addition, a planned unit development south side of East Lindsey Street, approximately half-mile east of 24th Avenue Southeast. Item thirteen, easement 2021-68, acceptance of a permanent right-of-way easement in the amount of $17,260 from Richard G. and Dorothy L. Manley for the 36th Avenue Northwest Widening Program from Tecunsa Road to Indian Hills Road. Item fourteen, special claim 2021-7 submitted by Greer and Don Schooler in the total amount of $10,621.43 for vehicle damage and car rental fees incurred as a result of a collision with a city vehicle on November 17, 2020 at West Robinson Street and North Interstate Drive. Item fifteen, acceptance of Amendment One to Emergency Solutions Grant in the amount of $40,810 for a total award of $188,502 from the Oklahoma Department of Commerce to be used to operate a street outreach program; approval of number one to contract 2021-42, and adoption of Resolution 2021-67 appropriating funds. Item sixteen, Amendment Number One to contract 1617-121 with Corolla Engineers Incorporated and InterFab Incorporated, successor to Foley Company, settling a disputed claim as to the project and providing for a mutual release of the parties for the same. Item seventeen, change order number six to contract 1617-121 with InterFab Inc., successor to Foley Company, increasing the contract amount by $124,533.36 for a revised contract amount of $30,735,496.42, adding 364 calendar days to the final completion date for the contract and final acceptance of the project. Item eighteen, contract 2021-76 with the Norman Arts Council for the 2021 Artful Inlets Program. Item nineteen, contract 2021-87, the project agreement with ODOT for the installation of a new traffic signal at the intersection of Alameda Street and Summit Lakes Boulevard-Lockwood Drive, and adoption of Resolution 2021-80. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the Consent Docket.
Second.
Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the Consent Docket? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the Consent Docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Patron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The Consent Docket is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Due to the continued rise in COVID cases, our council meetings will continue with restrictions put in place in November to shorten the times of our meetings to lessen the amount of exposure. Public comments will only be taken for public hearing items required by law. Items will have a 30-minute limit total. The applicant is allowed to speak for 10 minutes, and no one may speak more than three minutes. Item twenty, public hearing regarding Amendment Number Three to the FYE 25th Year Action Plan for the 45th Year Norman Community Development Block Grant Program, adding $737,568 awarded to the City of Norman through the CARES Act to be submitted to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development and adoption of Resolution 2021-82 transferring funds. I'll entertain a motion to conduct a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to conduct a public hearing. By a show of hands, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. I'd like to recognize Lisa Craig, our Grants Manager, to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The, uh, last spring, we came to you with the first substantial amendment for the CARES funds that were awarded to the CDBG program. Prior to that, we maneuvered some funding around to give us the opportunity to immediately address the need for rental assistance within our community. And so, the first amendment to the, what we call the B-19, meaning the funds were awarded with the 2019 program year, FYE 20, was we reprogrammed $75,000 of existing CDBG money. And then, because the HUD requires us to do this in a public hearing, because with the CDBG program, it's all about the participation of the community and helping us to make these decisions. And so, we follow a citizen participation plan that both the City Council and HUD approves. And part of that is, any substantial amendment needs to come to the council for approval before forwarding to HUD. And so, with the awarding of the CARES funding, HUD required that all of the CARES funding be kind of accounted for within the same program year. So even though we are no longer within the B-19 program year, all of these amendments are taking place within the B-19 year. It gets a little bit confusing, I understand. So, last May, our first award was $535,688,000. And with that, we programmed those funds to, well, I'll go into that in just a second. And so, the, uh, and then January this year, we received our second allocation. Uh, these are formula allocation based upon the HUD CDBG formula and the funding that was provided to HUD for the CARES Act. Um, so this will be substantial amendment number three. Uh, the requirement of this is that we have to expend 80% of the funds within three years. And the other requirement is that we have to focus this on households that have been directly affected by the COVID-19 crisis. So substantial amendment number two, that you approved back in May, we had $25,000 for administration of the grant. We provided five different nonprofits with $5,000 to help them to pivot from in-person meals to home-delivered meals. We provided $50,000 to assist in housing persons that are homeless by the purchasing of a bed and necessary amenities for an apartment; $376,688 to a Rent and Utility Assistance Program that just this week, we spent the last of. And then, we hired a position of a homeless program technician to assist in the administration of the program. This amendment, we're programming $30,000 for administration. And when we accepted the Emergency Shelter Grant earlier this year, we needed an extra $27,000 for the rent for the Warming Shelter, of which we were able to utilize CARES funding from the City of Norman, because this award was not here yet. And so, this will basically repay back the funds from the City of Norman CARES Fund. We are proposing, in addition to extending the Written Utility Assistance Program, operating a street outreach program. Um, as, as you have seen time and time again, the incidences of street homelessness in our community have been increasing. Existing staff, as well as nonprofit staff, we do the best we can to get out and actually work with the people to meet their needs and to work towards a housing solution. And outreach itself is just pretty much patched together at this point. There is no dedicated team that does this. We will have two grant-funded positions. They will know going into this that this funding is only for two years. We'll have a street outreach case manager and a housing navigator. The housing navigator will be working with all of the different continuum of care agencies, developing relationships with landlords, being able to track available units. If you can imagine, if there's about 25 case managers throughout the community, all trying to find an apartment, the number of phone calls that go out just trying to search and reach different landlords, this person will be able to, to have that information, you know, at their fingertips. And then, as we are working with the folks that are in the encampments, once we are absolutely certain that a campment has been abandoned and all personal property has been taken, we will then budget $50,000 to assist in the cleanup of those encampments so that reoccupation can be monitored. So to tell you a little bit about the Rental Assistance Program, 80% and below median family income, I'll show you a chart here in a minute showing you just what that is. Um, with these CARES funds, HUD is requiring that we make sure that there is not a duplication of benefit, meaning that some, some households is not receiving money from this pot of money and this pot of money. And so, the process that we have is, as we, as we approve these applicants, we contact the housing authority to make sure they are not on Section Eight or public housing. And then, from there, we, we contact the landlord to ensure that, yes, they are behind in their rent. No, they have not received additional funding, and the landlord actually certifies that. And then, we, uh, we work with the land, with the, the prospective recipients to document the effect that, that COVID-19 has had on them. If they've had a reduction of income, either from their hours being reduced, not being able to work for a month because they had COVID, have been laid off, um, and so, or if they were laid off and then came back to work, but they had a lapse of employment, they, we can still work with that. When we set the program up back in, uh, June, um, you know, when HUD and, and Congress did the CARES Act, they said, okay, here's your basic framework, get the money out on the street, we'll figure out the details later, uh, which is always a dangerous thing. And so, now HUD has kind of come up with a few more details. Um, when we first set it up, we were paying two months' worth of rent, current month and the next month, just to give these households a break, as well as paying $400 towards the utilities. Um, we would pay 200 to Electric, 100 to the City of Norman, and 100 to ONG if they had those utilities. If they only had Electric, which a lot of them did, we would pay $400 towards their electric bill. HUD has now kind of regrouped a little bit, and they really want to focus on rent, in particular, rent in arrears, because of the impending, uh, possible influx of, you know, the massive amounts of, uh, evictions that could be coming forward when the moratorium ends. And so, now HUD is saying that we would like for you to pay a minimum of three months, but up to six months in arrears for these households that qualify, and use some of the other funding sources to pay for rental, I mean, for utility assistance. Um, between the EFS Pre-Program, the Emergency Solutions Grant, there are a lot of funding out there for, for, uh, utility assistance. We will make appropriate referrals as we are discussing this. The reason we are only doing three months right now is that there's a current HUD guideline that is, that is possibly going to be revised that says if we provide more than 100 days' worth of assistance, we have to test for lead-based paint. And if there is defective paint surfaces, then we have to address it. And so, HUD is currently working towards amending that. And once they amend that, we will pivot to six months, um, under the guidelines. And so...
Real quick, could you explain why they're amending that? I mean, I'd see, is it because of the financial hardship it would place on cities?
Yes, yeah. Normally, um, the HUD requirements are, for regular CDBG, is that you can only provide three months' worth of ongoing assistance payments with CDBG funds. HUD did a waiver extending that to six months because of this, but they didn't correct the issue with the lead-based paint. And so, um, we just don't have the funding or the staffing to deal with the lead-based paint. What we have found with our housing rehab program is we have a very small incidence of lead-based paint, actually. We're required to test with our rehab program according to the HUD guidelines, but when you find it, you really find it. And you're looking at $25,000, $30,000 to remediate the situation.
Well, I hope that we can go back and check that out at some point. I'd prefer no one in Norman, Alabama.
You know, we do work with the Health Department. Um, if there is a child that is, is identified that has an elevated blood lead level, we do step in and try to, try to work with that, so. Um, we make all the payments directly to the landlord, the weblog website. Um, Norman website has the application on it. Uh, we're in constant communication with all the different agencies, with their different funding sources, making sure that we're getting the best fit for the applicant, um, as they come forward seeking assistance. The Street Outreach Program, as I said, is two full-time positions that are grant-funded for two years. The job announcement will be very specific, announcing that it is two years' worth of funding, and it's not guaranteed past that. Um, the case management will focus on engagement with permanent housing, emphasis of individuals resigning in encampments within Norman. The housing navigator, as I said, will assist with the outreach and housing placement, engaging landlords and tracking available units. The funds for the actual housing will come from the nonprofits that are also receiving rapid rehousing funding through the CARES Act and other, other, um, funding sources that will allow us to access the actual housing fund. And then, as I said, the encampment cleanup will only be undertaken once we have documented that it is abandoned and every effort's been made to ensure that all the remaining property is unclaimed. Here are the current, um, 80% median family income, one person, 41, 650, up to 59, 5 for four persons. Um, these usually change about May. And so, once, once HUD releases, the new ones will, will update those. And that is, um, that is their current income. And so, just because in 2020, you had an income of $150,000 and you both lost your job and you were on unemployment, HUD has is calculate their current employment, their current income projected for the next 12 months. And so, that, that, we're finding a lot of people that normally would not have qualified for that, being able to meet the guidelines. Any questions?
I have two. How do we plan to advertise this? It sounds like these staff positions with outreach and, and housing coordinator will help with that, so landlords know that it's also available. But I know that we all get messages, you know, asking, well, what is the city doing to help with rental assistance? And it sounds like quite a lot. So, is there a way, like, how are we doing that? And how are we hoping to increase it now that we have more funds?
We, we've had several articles in the paper. I realize that that doesn't always reach everybody. It is, it is on the website. Um, all of the agencies that normally get contacted for assistance are aware of what we are doing and refer people to us as we also refer people to them that don't qualify for our program. Um, we have information all out in the community. Um, you know, just today, you know, as I said, we just rolled into, to, you know, getting rid of the last bit of money. And it, and it ebbs and flows, you know, like, like the, the request that we just processed was for $18,000 worth of assistance. Um, and so, about once a week, that's, that's what we're putting forth and getting, getting back out to the landlords.
Okay. Is anything we can do to increase that? I know even things like Peachjar with Norman Public Schools goes out to every parent electronically. Because my thought would be, some people who end up needing it after being in a tough place for quite some time really won't know where to look because they've never had to.
Well, and we're, we're on 211 also. So if anytime anybody calls 211, the information's on there, and they get referred to us also.
Perfect. My second question, I believe the, the county has been approved for some recent rental assistant grants to help. Obviously, it's for the whole county.
Yeah.
But Norman is the biggest city in Cleveland County. So how will that factor into this? Because you had said they couldn't get, basically, double-dip and...
The, I'm not for sure.
Okay.
Because the, this funding is coming through HUD. And so, it has the HUD umbrella and the regulations for that. The $25 billion that was included with the last stimulus payment is coming directly through the Department of Treasury. And it has completely different rules.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, the, that was set up to where any unit of local government, over 200,000 people, could take theirs off the top. And, uh, Oklahoma County, Cleveland County, Tulsa County, Oklahoma City, and Tulsa were the five that were listed in the state. And so, Cleveland County took theirs. I don't know how much it is. I've reached out to them, but have not, have not heard how they're planning on, on administering their program.
I'm hoping we can coordinate on that, because, you know, Cleveland County residents or Norman residents. But I really appreciate that you clarified HUD and Treasury. I think there's been some confusion that the City of Norman has provided no rental or utility assistance because it hasn't come out of our specific CARES funding, which is simply not the case.
Right, right.
And so, and I also want to thank you so much for all of your hard work. I can't even imagine all that staff has had to pick up with this and, uh, and commend you on that and...
Well, it's, it's been a challenge of trying to keep track of the different pots of money. I will admit that. But, you know, between Michelle and Jane and I and Tara, uh, we, we have lots of flow charts.
Big fan of flow charts. Any other questions from council? Councilwoman Holman?
Thank you very much, Lisa, again, for all your work.
I'm sorry, I can't...
I need to scoot closer and speak louder. I know, it's hard. I can hardly reach the mic. But, uh, just thank you again, Lisa, for all your work and your staff. Um, I did, I was just seconding kind of what the mayor was saying. I think when we first started the program back in May or so, we had a press release that, like our normal press releases that had a link and that we could all share, maybe an updated, uh, one of those sent to all of us would be good. And we can all...
Right.
Share it on our various medias and stuff and...
Sure. Yeah, right now, because we are flowing from one funding source to another, we've paused it, we've communicated with everybody that's inquired and told them it'll be about a month. Um, and so, we're going to rework our flyer to reflect these changes we had to make, but then we'll get it out to you guys.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Councilwoman Foreman?
So I've had a, kind of a mixed bag of reactions to this agenda item. Some people are very excited for the work that's going to be done. And some people are concerned about the new positions. So thank you for clarifying that it's not, you know, guaranteed after two years. But if it is, is this something that we could continue to get grant funding for these positions?
It, it could be.
That would be an option?
You know, depending on what, what funding opportunities come up. And, you know, we're going into this that, you know, we're, we're going to do this for two years, see how it goes, and then, uh, evaluate it and see what kind of outcomes we're getting and decide how aggressive we want to be on seeking, seeking other funding or pivoting and doing something else.
Okay, thank you. Based on kind of that question, hopefully, it'll build into a strategic plan that we're working on?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then...
Yeah, this, this was the number one thing that has come forth time and time again of, you know, smaller plans that we have worked out, um, is that, you know, the duplication of efforts regarding housing navigation, as well as the difficulty in staff from agencies being able to get out into, into the community to do this. Um, and like I said, it's just kind of a patchwork right now, but this will really be able to give us an opportunity to focus on this.
Excellent. Councilwoman Hall?
Yeah, I just wanted to circle back on a few things. Can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Even closer. Ooh, maybe I break into song, I don't know. So I just wanted to circle back because you did mention that there would be a brief pause.
Yes.
And that we have, um, exhausted our current funding, but that you are in communication with any new applicants as to what...
Right.
The timeline is.
Yeah.
So my question is, um, is there, are there other agencies that are able to address this... Oh, there we go. Whoa. Um, to address the, um, the gap in the, in the next 30 days. Okay.
Because with the other funding source that, that is used for rental assistance is the Emergency Solutions Grant.
Okay.
Um, and again, you know, it's all these different funding sources with quirky little rules. And one of the rules with the Emergency Solutions Grant that's causing a lot of heartache across the country, they cannot provide, um, assistance unless there is an eviction pending. And be with the moratorium, there's not an eviction pending, unless it is for cause. You can't evict for non-payment of rent. But if they're evicting you for cause, you really don't need rent money anyway. And so, at that point, you're looking at a rapid rehousing of relocating the person. And so, that's, that is something that's being talked about by the Department of Commerce, as well as HUD, on, you know, the moratorium currently goes through the end of March. And is it going to be extended? And if so, how can we legislatively change these regulations to allow us to address this impending rent crisis? So...
So, okay, that takes care of that. And then, just to, uh, again, clarify a little bit further on the two new positions that are going to be added. Um, you mentioned briefly that, um, we've had other reports in the recent past that have suggested that we do need more centralized administrative function that these two positions are going to fill. Would you say that's accurate?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Um, the Spangler Study, a couple of years ago, that was, that was one of the recommendations. Um, it's what, you know, Michelle hears every week at Coordinated Case Management. Well, I just couldn't get out there. You know, we know this is happening, but I can't get out there.
Mm-hmm.
And especially now with, with COVID. Um, you know, part of the funding will be, you know, providing appropriately, you know, PPE equipment for these people.
So...
And as they, as they go out, you know, into the encampment.
So requesting these two positions really does, is a direct result of recommendations from the COC...
Mm-hmm, yes.
...in this report. Okay, thank you. Um, the other thing, as Councilmember Foreman mentioned, I do like the idea that it's just a temporary position, especially since we're getting ready to take up, um, our, you know, RFP for our strategic plan. Because we have an opportunity to see how it's actually working for us. And there, you know, we may or may not...
Yeah.
...be able to fill those positions after two years. But I think that's a real positive as we're moving forward to get, um, more information of how we should move forward. The timing seems to be pretty good...
Yeah.
...if, um, a decision is made to, to go in a different direction. And also demonstrate if this is really meeting the expectation that we're hoping it would be.
You know, one of the interesting things is we, as Michelle was, was researching all of this and we were gathering information from, you know, not only Oklahoma City and Tulsa, but, but peer cities across the country about how they were addressing this, they were sending us their job descriptions. And at the bottom of almost every one of them, it said, this is a grant-funded position, not guaranteed past X date. And, um, so we found that, you know, I was really hesitant to kind of, you know, do that, but apparently, that's the norm with this type of... But apparently that's the norm with this type of position. There are a lot of people that, that, the, the providers have said there are a lot of people that want to do this work, work, just not forever. And so this gives them an opportunity to do this with an exit plan.
And so we do have the flexibility of deciding how we want to move forward after that two-year period. So this is a very short-term solution.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Then the other thing I was going to ask you, we've had a running conversation about this. But I, as you know, I think most of us, all of us have been really concerned about meeting the need for rent and utility assistance. And this has been a fairly robust program that has been able to meet the needs since the summertime.
Right.
And so I, you know, anything that we can do to keep informing our community that these resources are out here certainly is a plus. And so now tonight, we're going to be getting another four hundred thousand dollars to add to this. Do you think that there may be more funding becoming available?
Through the CARES Act, the CDBG program is funded at five billion dollars. And so we have received two of our allocation. There's a third one coming. It's a little bit different because it's running through the state. The preliminary estimates that we have gotten for that, they anticipate doing their request for applications late spring. That's about the information that I have. I don't know if it's a formula allocation or if it's tell us what you want to do and we'll see about funding you. But it is just limited to the entitlement communities, which there are ten of us in the state. And so once more information comes back from that, we'll be, we'll be applying, you know, for those funds. In addition, there's another round of Emergency Solutions Grant funds that will be coming out. And, you know, because the limitations on rent, because of the eviction moratorium, the ESG providers have increased their availability of rapid rehousing funding as well as their utility assistance funding and their motel vouchers. And so that's another round that is coming also.
So based on the need that you've identified so far and the funding sources that we've already identified tonight, including those that will be flowing to our partner organizations, do you feel that the city and the county and our partner organizations have the ability to meet the need for the foreseeable future for?
Right, right now I do. You know, I don't know how much money the county received. I do know theirs is a program that is set up to do six months in arrears also. The, you know, not knowing how they're going to do their program, obviously we'll have to coordinate on duplication of benefits and things like that. And, you know, the manager asked me how I thought, how long I thought this four hundred thousand. And I estimated and he, he guessed pretty accurately through May, which will be about the time that we will be receiving our next allocation through the state. In addition to, I don't know how long it'll take the county to, to get theirs out, so.
So...
So I think that we're, you know, the need will never be met.
Right.
But, and of course I can't project what the future will hold. But I think for the, for the, you know, the time right now, we're, we're sitting pretty good.
So just as a comment, the other thing I was really happy to see included in this grant was the fifty thousand dollars for site cleanup. This has been a significant issue for residents and neighbors in Ward Four. And they have a compassionate heart about trying to address the needs of our homeless individuals. But there also are pretty considerable concerns about certain identified areas that
Right.
really is beyond a volunteer effort and
Right.
will require a professional approach to site cleanup as we move forward.
You know, we've, we've had several volunteer groups that have stepped up to, to assist in this. And I have to, you know, give a pat on the back to the Parks Department as well as the Utilities Department. They've been great to work with us as we identify certain areas that need immediate attention. Primarily, most of those have been on city property. What we're seeing now is, you know, a couple of larger encampments that are on private property.
Right.
One of the beauties of CDBG funds is that by legislation, it is allowed to be used on private property.
Yeah.
And so, you know, being able to determine that a camp is abandoned is, is a multi-step process. But unless it's cleaned up after that has been determined, it's every week, you know, was that piece of trash there or not? And this, this, this population that we're dealing with is very mobile. And so the less opportunity we have for a camp to be reoccupied, the better off it will be.
Well, and just the condition of the, of the site itself is not fit generally for any human being, so. Thank you, and I just want to thank you for all of your continued efforts, all these years that, channeling the CDBG money and successfully continuing all these programs and looking for all the opportunities to take advantage of how we can use federal funding to move forward in the future. So thank you for that.
Thank you, and thanks, counsel, for all your support over these years.
Thank you. Councilman Carter?
Just want to again, thank you so much for all your hard work. This is quite a wonderful program that you're developing here. And I remember we had a little brief conversation and, and just to reiterate what you'd said with Councilmember Hall, that you feel like we're in pretty decent shape for the foreseeable future this, this fiscal year, kind of. As far as rental assistance, feel like based on our current levels, things could change, but you feel...
And, you know, one, one of the beauties of the CDBG program, as you saw with Amendment One that we did, was we can take our current CDBG allocation and reprogram that if for some reason it ends up that the state doesn't do their money till next year. And so we can, we can look at unutilized funds that can maybe be put off a year or so and come back and reprogram those if we need to. Hoping that won't happen, but...
I'm looking at you, but I'm also looking right straight behind you at our good friend, Mr. Martin from the Chamber of Commerce. And it kind of dawned on me if there's anyone that's more, well, the only per, the renter, of course, that's arrear has a huge financial incentive for assistance, but the next person in line would be the landlord, I would think. And so maybe communications through the chamber, they might be able to help us get that information to landlords. I do remember a conversation I had with a landlord a few months ago, you know, letting them know that there was this program and they can...
Certainly.
They own multiple rental houses in Ward Two. And so, you know, that, that, when there's always a financial incentive to do something, it helps in that communication process, so.
Right.
Look forward to Mr. Martin helping us out back there. And so the other brief question that I had is just a discussion that I'd had with someone about the possibility. I know we have a program where we connect homeless individuals with, we try to work to where we can get them connected with VA benefits, social security benefits and things like that. Just wondered if you could just briefly bring us up to speed on that. And the question then becomes, are these individuals eligible for stimulus checks that have been sent out in the mail? And is there a way to possibly connect them that gives them a little seed money to go out and restart their lives?
You know, I could stand up here and talk and it would sound like I know what I'm talking about. But I'm going to call on Michelle Evans. She really has, has the, the information on that.
Hello, counsel. Good evening to you all. Councilmember, yes, we do have a very robust system for that. Our SSVF Partners, which is the Service for Veteran Families and VA, they connect the individuals and we staff those as well every Friday at the meeting. So they do have their internal processes to where they are getting them connected to file online and to make sure that every single person gets the much-needed resources and funds available. Successfully today, don't have an exact number, but they have reached out to everyone. We have one case manager, have to call him out by name, Michael Primo. He goes out to the encampments. He signs them up right there on the spot. It's amazing. So he really, single-handedly, him and the SSVF team do a lot of that work. And the VA Center as well, they sign them up through their walk-in hours. So yes, they are definitely getting attached to those resources.
I just don't think we can let our community know that enough. It's just a wonderful job that you've been doing and your, and your partners have been doing. And, and this city is very proactive in that. And we really look at this problem, problem seriously, I feel like. And I think this, don't you feel like the street outreach program is even going to? I know we had, you say you talk, but you know, it's like, we all have these emails, you know. I feel like we've talked about this a lot, you know, but it's been emails. But, but yeah, I think you've seen, you've expressed a little frustration that people can't follow through. But, and I know COVID's the other thing, but, 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 but manpower has been a real issue for you, hasn't it? And so this should really make a, anticipate this could make a big difference.
Oh, I, if, I can express the difference that it will make. I, I'm going to tell you, it will probably make the single-handedly largest increase in connecting these individuals to housing. Because as Lisa said, staffing is the issue. Here at our agency partner, at our partnering agencies, they are really just pressed because they are the ones getting the individuals to housing and getting them sign up for benefits. Finding the house, that is the most time-consuming part of that whole process. So to have an individual making that relationship with our landlords is absolutely crucial. So we can have an ongoing list, like our partners in Oklahoma City do and Tulsa. They have an ongoing list and we match that with the individual. It can be immediate. Instead of just saying, staffing these individuals every Friday, saying, I've got eighty people who need housing. Now I've got maybe twelve case managers. Get to work. And as you can imagine, and that's why our time, and you know, we get graded on this by HUD and our annual application for the city. If it takes longer than ninety days to house an individual, we kind of get docked by that. So HUD doesn't look at that as favorable. So by having these two positions, making that time less helps the individual become stable. And obviously it helps for our funding to continue. So it's an all-around benefit.
Well, just to hear you talk like this and Lisa talk like this just makes me so proud to be a citizen of this, of Norman. And I just can't thank you enough, so.
We'll be, thank you all very much too for your, for your support. We can't do it without that. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from council? I have one final quick one, and it popped into my mind because I saw our new Chief Diversity and Equity Officer. Have we translated all of this into Spanish?
That's a great question.
We will, we will figure out how to make that happen.
Absolutely.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Great question.
Introduce yourself.
Thank you. Cynthia Allen, Diversity, Chief Diversity and Equity Officer for the City of Norman. Thank you so much for the question on the translation services for Spanish language. Actually taking notes and, and really doing some follow-ups to make sure that our website begins to have those Spanish resources. And also, as Lisa Craig mentioned, when we revamp the flyers and the information brochures on the updated opportunities for rental assistance, et cetera, we'll definitely want to make those accessible in Spanish as well. So we're making headway into identifying what opportunities there are. But that will be one great way to reach out to our community. So thank you for that.
Thank you. We're glad to have you. All right. Seeing no other questions from council regarding this item, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, are there any final questions or comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to close the public hearing. By a show of hands, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. I will now entertain a motion to approve or reject the amendment.
Motion.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to approve the amendment. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item twenty-one has been withdrawn by the applicant. Item twenty-two, ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-three, rezoning two thirty-one West Main Street from center-city form-based code to center-city planned unit development. I would like to recognize Councilwoman Peacock for an abstention on this item.
Thank you. Yes, I need to recuse myself on item twenty-two as I am the architect of record for the project and have an actual conflict under Section two dash one oh three D one of the city code.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to allow Councilwoman Peacock to abstain from voting on item twenty-two. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilwoman Peacock abstaining.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion.
Second.
I'd like to recognize Sean Rieger, representative of the applicant, to make a presentation.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you. It's good to be back. It's been a long time since I've been up here, so glad to be here on an exciting project tonight. This is downtown. We are downtown Norman for, I believe Dr. Bird's email said, the third new project in many, many years this is. And I know it's a brief presentation tonight to keep it at ten minutes, so we'll do that, hopefully. We have it loaded here. Not sure Bryce is here.
That was the one that was removed, I believe.
Okay.
There we go.
There we go. All right, here we go. So these are staff slides, so existing zoning. We are right in the middle. Dr. Bird's project, you see right next to it, the CCPUD is the pink. We are right to the left over here. You will recognize this project pretty quickly, I think. This is the center-city code. The red is basically urban storefront. The orange is what we call urban general. You see, incidentally, it's a little odd in that it is, changes mid-block here, and we'll talk about that in just a moment. This is the existing site. There's a little red brick building here. They call it a cottage or the former office building of the lumberyard. It is still there. It's a beloved little structure and we intend to keep it tonight. It's a major part of this project. This is the aerial of that site right there. Actually, it's building in the back is gone, but the little red building is still there and that's going to be preserved tonight with your vote to protect that structure. There is the little red brick building. We'll talk a lot more about that in just a moment, how we're going to preserve that. There's Dr. Bird's building on the right, one of the very new projects in downtown that was an exciting addition to downtown. And this will be compatible with that just to the west of it. There again is the little red brick building. Dr. Bird's iconic sign up here, which we're going to have another sign proposed tonight that goes just to the left of this a little ways. And that's a view looking to the south from sort of our campus where we're standing tonight. And that's the back of the little red brick building. There's looking down Main Street, down the sidewalk, just to the left of us is the site. I'll move pretty quick here so we can get to the drawings. And this is the proposal. I'm going to go on to the next set of slides here. So it's about a point one-six acre site, fifty feet wide by a hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty feet deep. And there again, you see the site. I do want to show you this slide. This is nineteen ninety-seven aerial. And you see, there was still nothing there. So this is twenty-three years ago. I don't know how far you would have to go back to see this as a used site. I do remember as a little boy, I shopped there with my dad to buy lumber, but that was a long time ago. So I don't think it's been anything since then. So it's decades empty for many years and it has been for sale for many years. So Joey Wisnick of Windstone Construction has come forward to do a project on this site and to preserve this little cottage building, to do a project around it. I'll show you in just a moment what that looks like. Again, twenty-twenty-five is unchanged. Center-city code, so we've been in front of you with center-city code many times. It is a large document. It's about a ninety-two-page document. It's a good document. It's worked, but it also needs changes sometimes to fit particularities of sites. And this is one of those conditions where it just simply doesn't quite work in the several specific ways, and I'll show you that. Generally, this is the site plan. You see the site plan on the left and right. Basically preserves the unique building on the corner right here. This is Webster Street going vertically, and this is Main Street at the bottom. That's the little red brick building right there. One of the things you'll start to see is there's a very narrow sidewalk here on the left side of the building. And I'll show you a picture of that so you can see it. And one of our variances is asked to move the building back from that sidewalk because if we don't, we are about three feet from the curb line. If you follow center-city code specifically, we would be in really a difficult situation, so. So we're going to pull that back so we have an active sidewalk. We have a rooftop patio space above, right next to the little brick building. We have a rain garden right in the back, right here. So off the alley will be a rain garden required by the PUD to be built. And we have some flexibility for multiple tenants. I'll talk about that in just a minute. Allowance for residential uses on the upper stories. And the initial story will be required to be built per the PUD with structural floor joists for the second phase of the second... And the initial story will be required to be built per the PUD with structural floor joist for the second phase of the second story. So, and that's, we talked to Councilmember Hall about that, that's a six-figure difference to build it that way as opposed to just build a roof. So that's committed in the PUD to make sure that the floor for the second floor is in place in Phase 1. Let me go back here a little bit. Now, since Plan Commission, we made several changes. Plan Commission, this did pass, and it comes to you tonight with no protest. Nobody came to the pre-development meeting. It's really been very quiet, I've not seen anything on social media. We've not been contacted by really anybody. So we appreciate Councilmember Hall always working with us greatly on this project to improve it. And this is really the gist of that work since Plan Commission. The allowable uses were changed really very slightly. What the urban storefront says is that has a very specific set of words. And we're going to keep that on the Main Street side, and there's a little clarification we'll do here in just a moment. But on the Main Street side, we're absolutely going to keep that. On the Webster side, we are asking for the ability to do offices within 20 feet of the required building line. That would be a variance. So we're asking to do that, at least that would be a variance for the red. Remember how the red was mid-block? So we, that would be a variance for the red area on the Webster side. So that's one variance. Then, the variance is for that red brick building. And this is another point I make about the Center City Code. It just simply doesn't fit everywhere, frankly. Good job, it works, but if you follow the Center City Code on this site, you would have to remove that red brick building by code. You couldn't leave it there. You would be forced to level that building and build a whole new building all the way up to the corner. Well, we've heard a lot through this project, everybody wants to preserve the red brick building. So that takes a variance. So we have to have a variance to allow us to preserve that red brick building. We thank Councilmember Hall for putting in more language as to preservation of that red brick building. And we really adopted quite a bit of language from the historic district guidelines, so that we have to basically maintain it, repair it, and improve it in conformity to the existing materials. And historically accurate, basically, is what we have to do. So that's some other changes since Plan Commission. The next change was the floor joist. We put into the PUD that we have to build it with floor joist instead of roof joist. That's a big difference architecturally, and that's a significant change that we put in since Plan Commission. And finally, the change since Plan Commission was we reduced the signage request. We are adhering to the Center City Code signage except for now one change that we're requesting. We're requesting what's called a scaffolding sign. You've seen them in Oklahoma City and other areas around the nation. New York City has many of them. This is really a very unique concept. We think it will look really cool and interesting, I'm going to show you that in just a minute. But that is a change from Center City, and we've come, I think, to terms that are agreeable of how we can do that. We took out, though, a request for an additional wall sign since Plan Commission, so that is taken away. So, on the right is the list of variances. Now, don't get too caught up on this, because basically, it falls into several categories. Center City Code says you have to have, for instance, you have to have a continuous wall on the, on the required build line. Well, if you're going to keep the red brick building, there's going to be a gap, and I'll show you that in just a minute. So just again, it doesn't really work if you're going to keep the red brick building. Also, the Webster side doesn't really work because it's too close to the sidewalk. So we have issues of the required build line, the continuous wall, things like that. That's basically the first about three exemptions. Then we have the second floor exemption to allow us to do this in phases, so that we can build the second floor in the second phase. And then we have the use change to allow us to do offices on Webster Street within that red area. And then we have changes as to landscaping, because if you recall, the federal project already did the landscaping on this corner. We don't really want to change that, so we're going to keep that. And a few other variances, but basically, and the signage, the scaffolding sign. So let me show you the project real quickly, and probably in close to 10 minutes, I'll be very quick. You see the street right here on the left. So if you look at that, that's an example of how the code doesn't really work, because it's only about three feet. So if we build that building to the property line, it would be literally about three feet from the curb. So we're asking for a variance to pull the building back. And you see the building right over here is pulled back from that line, so that we can have the doors and the wall back, back from that edge. So we actually have a functional sidewalk instead of what would be required otherwise. Let me just go back, you can see right down there. Again, if we followed Center City Code, we would actually have to build right up to that edge. But we're going to pull it back a little bit so we actually have a functional area. This is the elevations that Mr. Peacock did, really some good work. I think it fits the character of downtown. You see, the first phase, west elevation, is just the lower storefront and the little red brick building with a stairway up to a patio above. And basically, a trail of structure and a patio up here. Then, in the second phase, most of that structure goes away and a second floor gets added. The second floor is haunted to be residences, probably, could be other uses as well, but probably it would be residences with two stairways up to the second floor. From the front elevation on the left is the first phase. Again, a little storefront on the front, and this would fit the uses by the urban storefront. We are not asking for a change there. And then on the left is the red brick building. On the right is the second phase with now the second floor built up above. We still have a rooftop deck, just not as large as it was under the first phase. This is just some character of what's around it. This is to the east of the Tully Park. This is to the west. I would have you notice one thing when you're looking at this image, there's Dr. Bird's building right there. There's the red, red brick building. The scaffolding sign, I'm going to show you in just a minute, would be back behind this blue building, basically. So it won't really be noticeable, it certainly will not conflict with, this is an old image, you don't see that mural up there in this image, but it will not conflict with the Norman downtown image that's on Dr. Bird's office. And so there is, again, sort of a perspective view of what is planned. This is the first phase, and you see the second phase ghosted above it. There's the downtown Norman sign. And this is an aerial or a perspective from bird's eye that shows again the rooftop right here. Second phase would basically come in right up here over the top of this. This would be removed for the second phase for the residences. But you can see now where we actually have an active sidewalk, because we have pulled the building back. So we allow for that variance to bring the building in a way that we can actually have a sidewalk. Just a few more images, Webster Street right here. And then, this is the signage, the rooftop proposed sign. And remember, I told you earlier that it would be set back. This is in the PUD locationally where it would be. Dr. Bird's mural sign is up front here. This would be back over the second floor, quite a ways back in the property. So it's not going to conflict with Dr. Bird's sign. And it's specific in its size, very intentional, that would be called J Ford Downtown is the name of this building, and that's the plan to be put on that sign. Again, set back and constructed on top of the second story of the building. We're very proud and excited that Dr. Bird wrote to you. I hope you've seen this, but he wrote a long email in support of this project, very detailed in saying how much he appreciates. It's the third project downtown, new project in recent years. He likes it as a compatible neighbor. He also spoke very specifically about sharing a dumpster, so that, we do that quite a bit in Norman, actually, but this way we can, we can make it an efficient use. And he talks about the signage as well, so we appreciate Dr. Bird's support of this project. With that, again, no protests, no neighbors attended, we've really heard very, very little, except that we appreciate very much Councilmember Hall's work on this. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. I'll dive in with a few, this is pure curiosity, where did the mural go that was on the demolished building?
I don't know.
Okay, all right.
I don't know.
Missed that one. What is the timeline for the additional floors?
We say as the market absorbs, the first project is the down floor. He needs to get that built, he needs to get a revenue stream coming from that project. I think it probably wouldn't be long because of the demand downtown, but he needs to get the first phase done financially and, and lending wise, get that in place, get it filled. And then it would be after that as the market dictates as to when he would do the next phase.
So in this picture, the sign is on the structure that goes on the first floor, but that will be replaced with a second floor. So what happens with the sign then?
It goes back on the second floor when the second floor is rebuilt.
Okay, so it'd be almost in the exact same place?
That's correct.
Okay.
It would have to be, by this PUD.
Is that some sort of event space? Because could I like reserve it for Nora Music Fest, or?
It is anticipated.
Something like that?
Correct. It is anticipated to be a space that would be available to the public for events and things of that nature. We're not talking a real huge space, you can see the scale when you see the, the people standing right here and here. So we're not talking a enormous space, this is a relatively small site, but yes, it would be available for events like that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Foreman?
My question was about the sign also, so. But that doesn't, the height-wise, that doesn't violate like Center City Form-Based Code, any kind of height requirements on the second story?
This is a variance to Center City Code.
Okay.
Center City Code does not anticipate any scaffolding sign like that. The whole sign itself would be a variance request from this.
Even higher up, it's, that's where we're voting on.
Well, it would be a variance request, so the height, yeah. There's, there's nothing like that that's in the Center City Codes. The whole experience of it would be a request for a variance.
All right, any other questions over here? I'm just going to let you wrap it up.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Do you have any, Councilmember Holman?
Comments, no questions.
Okay. Any questions from you, Councilmember Hall?
Oh, questions from me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that your turn?
Yep, that is your turn.
Okay, so discussions with Mr. Wischnick, Mr. Peacock, Mr. Joyce, and Mr. Rieger, and myself began really in earnest in December. And have continued to literally earlier this afternoon with my final conversation with Mr. Wischnick. So I want to thank the applicant for his willingness to have frank and open conversations about my concerns about his project and his willingness to make revisions to his, his original CCPUD that was finally received. The revised version was finally received yesterday afternoon. So this revised document contains added language that demonstrates Mr. Wischnick's stated commitment to me to preserve the historic building on the corner of Main and Webster. So many of our neighbors throughout Norman want to see this building preserved according to historic preservation best practices. It's a historic placemaker in our city's story and a sentimental favorite of our, our community. So in my role representing Ward 4, and the deep interest from the rest of Norman, preserving this historic building is the most important aspect in even considering this application for a CCPUD. And because of the number of variances that were requested, I think it's really important for our community to understand that most of them are directly related to preserving the building. So that is why, in this particular instance, the only way that this project can be considered for a lot of the reasons that Mr. Rieger already pointed out is by using this vehicle of a Center City PUD. So I just want to remind everybody that a CCPUD is an alternative zoning district that allows an applicant to write their own zoning ordinance. So the purpose of a CCPUD is to encourage developments that create the character of development envisioned in the Form-Based Code. So this includes providing open space and street space that is compatible with the concept of the Form-Based Code, as well as providing a comprehensive and an innovative plan and design for development which is consistent and compatible with the surrounding development. And I think we've accomplished that here. For this project, we've already heard about the multiple exceptions that are being requested. And as I said, most of these are technical in nature and required specifically because of the stated commitment to preserve the historic corner building. So I have a few questions for the applicant to just kind of review the changes that, where we started with this document and where we're ending up tonight. And so I'm not sure, Mr. Rieger, if you want to answer them, or if Mr. Wischnick wants to, so let's just go.
I'm happy.
Okay, so the three areas that we've really focused on in the last week or so, one of them is about the permissible uses. And you have a long list of permissible uses for this property in Exhibit C. And I specifically requested that you add language to state your intent, that you'll be in compliance with the language of the Form-Based Code for Main Street, which is an urban storefront use. And you have done that. So this is important to adhere to the vision of Form-Based Code to create an active pedestrian street that interacts with the vibrant and interesting storefronts. So this is covered in several sections in the Form-Based Code. But this, my question is, is there any conflict in intent with the Form-Based Code of variance number five on page nine of the revised document?
Yeah, Councilmember, thank you for that. And not at all, what, what we intended was, if you look back, we can get very detailed on this if you want, but if you look at page four, development, plan, design, permissible uses, we had included, per your request, the language that the ground floor units facing Main Street will comply with Section 404A and Section 704D1 of the CC-FBC. And I think that's the pivotal language you were looking for, that has specific words of retail sales or service or professional service. Absolutely our intent, as written there, that Main Street would comply with those sections of the Center City Code that has those uses.
Okay.
The only intent was that, again, the urban red storefront on Webster side would be allowed to have offices.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. So on number five, because number seven is the other issue that we need to resolve. So number five was the allowance of additional commerce and civic uses on the ground floor units fronting Webster.
Correct, yes.
And so that's a variance that requested to meet your desire to have more flexibility on mixed use on Webster.
Correct, because the urban storefront, the red, as we call it, the urban storefront, is very specific with literally just those three uses enumerated over in this paragraph I'm in.
So the one that's also in question that we discovered really right before the meeting is number seven. Allowance of office use on the first floor within 20 feet of the RBL.
Correct.
So I think you have two, two ways you could go with that. So I don't know if you want to strike that, because it's in conflict with.
That's exactly what we were going to propose. I think if you just strike that, you're there.
Okay, so you're comfortable doing that?
I am.
So I'm not sure, you know, how we need to take care of that, but I'm going to get through the rest of my questions. So, okay, so that really wraps up and resolves that issue that, that we've been working on for a couple of weeks or so. And so then, to the existing building, again, working with the applicant who's agreed to add stronger and more detailed language to the treatment of the historic brick building and your commitment to preserve it, I think it's just a great opportunity to really educate the community of what actually is going to be happening here. And this building is listed in the 2010 Intensive Level Survey of Downtown Norman as a contributing resource to the downtown historic district. Well, that sounds awesome. In, in historic preservation world, a contributing resource is a historic building or site that retains the essential architectural integrity of its original design or condition. So many people are surprised to learn that although many buildings downtown are considered part of the downtown historic district, they have no legal, no zoning or legal protection in contrast to our three historic neighborhoods that have the most restricted zoning overlay to preserve not only the character of the houses, but also of the neighborhoods. So it's really important in this case that we rely on the language of the CCPUD to back up Mr. Wischnick's commitment to preserving the building. So again, as a way to make sure the community understands what we're getting here, let's just review the sections that you agreed to add to your revised document yesterday. So is your intent to retain and preserve the original wall and/or building materials?
That's correct, Councilmember, and if you have it under section two on existing quarter building, it's on page five on my document. Where we added all of those paragraphs per your request. And it has a number of paragraphs that talk about repair, remodeling, or improvements, acts of God, things of that nature, but that is our intent.
So it, it's your intent, your intent to retain and preserve the original wall and building materials?
That's correct.
Yeah. Is it your intent to not recover any original masonry of the building and clearly using siding or painting the brick and maintain the exterior masonry?
That's correct, and we talked about, the back of the building right now is odd, and it has a bunch of coverings on it, so we need to see what is under that.
Yeah.
Before we know for sure.
And I think you've made allowances for some flexibility with that, and that, that's understood. But good point to raise, because you're not really sure what you're going to get.
We don't know what's on the back of that building and the roof line, I could probably show you a little.
Okay. Is it your intent to align with the original elevations and roof patterns or designs to the extent feasible?
Correct, yes.
Is your intent to preserve the original openings to the building, including windows and doors, as well as original glass and metal materials? With the exception of one window that shall be allowed to be updated and proved to serve as a potential serving window, which sounds interesting.
That's correct.
Is it your intent to not substantially alter or affect the existing footprint with the structure?
That's correct, Councilmember, and all those that you read are in there under paragraphs A through F on section two.
Okay, so.
Councilmember, in the, the hope of saving some time, if it's in the document, can we not read it verbatim?
Okay, it's, I'm not reading it verbatim, there's much more. And I just want to guarantee that we are really meeting the expectation of the community to preserve the building. So the last piece is the signage, and I think we've worked through that too. The applicant originally requested variances for 300-square-foot wall and a scaffolding sign. And I want to thank. And I want to thank Mr. Wishnick for removing the variance for the three hundred square foot wall sign. That leaves the scaffolding sign. And, um, as, uh, already explained with the exhibit, um, it does include very specific details now about, um, the s, the size of the sign, the location of the sign, um, the wording of the sign. Um, so even though there's, um, language in the document, I just wanted to also, uh, circle back with Mr. Wishnick of his intent to, um, this is the sign that you are proposing to build, and I think you also covered that. So, um, we had some details on, uh, the square footage of the sign, and I think it was just a semantic issue that we were able to get resolved. So, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we had Mr. Wishnick's commitment to stick to the design of that sign. So, that's good. Um, I had a question for Jane Hudson. Thank you, Mr. Rieger.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Uh, thank you so much, and I appreciate all of your input this week as we tried to work some of the details out. So, um, the one thing that I just wanted to, um, review is, under the existing corner building language, when it, uh, talks about, um, really gets to the heart of preserving the building and what it's gonna take to preserve the building, there was a phrase in here, um, that, uh, "subject to any necessary improvements or repairs should be done in accordance with the criteria enumerated below in order to make the building usable for its intended purpose." Um, how, how do you interpret that as a planning director?
Uh, well, so, here's, so that's an existing building, and depending on what the applicant decides to do with the building, and maybe it's not this applicant, maybe it's somebody else that has purchased the site, depending on what the building code would require them to bring to code in that existing building code, um, that's adopted with the City of Norman, you know, i- it's possible that, um, I mean, it's possible that it may just not be feasible to, to the expense that could go into, uh, bringing the building up to code. I don't know that for sure. Um, I did visit with, uh, the building official, and, you know, that's kind of what we came up with. Until we determine what an applicant's use for the facility might be, it's gonna be hard for us to say that they could actually use it for a specific use.
Okay, so, this is really just the beginning of a long process, um, to, uh, building codes and all kinds of other things are gonna be, having to be taken into consideration that could, um, maybe require an amendment or an alteration to the plan. But, um, with the, um, added language that we've added over the next few days, um, do you feel like we're moving in the right direction to preserve the building?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, it's clear that that's the intent of the applicant, is to keep it if at all possible.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Rieger?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hall, I was just discussing with City Legal.
Mm-hmm.
On the variance request, allowance of office use on first floor within twenty foot of the RBL, you asked to strike that in conference with City Council, City Attorney Council. Uh, I think we would prefer that it says, instead, leave it in and just add, "accept those units fronting Main Street", would I think be the better approach.
Okay, that's, that's acceptable, um, and I don't know...
Is that the one amendment that we need to make?
That is it.
Okay, can you please work with the city clerk to ensure exactly what the amendment is? And then just repeat it real quick?
I will.
The motion on the floors to amend?
Okay, the proposal is to amend Section C seven to add language at the end that states, "accept those, uh, offices fronting Main Street."
Motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
The motion on the floors to amend the proposed CCPUD to include the language just read by our city clerk. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember, uh, Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The amendment passes unanimously with Councilmember Peacock abstaining.
Thank you. There are no other questions from council at this time, so this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item as amended. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Holman?
Yes, um, I just briefly want to, um, express my thanks to the applicant for bringing this project forward. Um, and for Councilmember Hall for really working with them to try to get this, uh, really detailed down so that residents of Ward Four especially, people that, all around the city that love coming to downtown could have some assurance that this is what is gonna happen, and that, uh, this little cottage that everyone loves so much will be preserved, or all the best efforts that we can possibly put in writing to make it so, anyway. So, uh, yeah, this has been an empty lot for a number of years. It was unused when it did have a building on it before. And as someone that has spent three, three years of my life working on that Center City policy, uh, for this area, um, what we've been able to see happen since then, um, in my opinion, has mostly been positive. And I think a project like this is really further evidence of that. And I'm very excited to see, um, something like this come to a prominent corner. This, uh, intersection, uh, Webster turns into ASP, and ASP is the Main Street of Campus Corner. So when people leave Campus Corner and they come to downtown Main Street, this intersection is what they see. And so I've always thought, whatever's here has gotta leave a good impression, and I think this will. So, uh, I feel satisfied with what I've seen, and, uh, I do plan to support this. Thank you.
Councilmember Petron?
I'll be brief. I just wanted to extend my thanks to, um, Lee as well, to Councilmember Hall, and to the applicant. I think it's a really special project, and, um, I'm excited about it. And I think this is exactly what HUD's, what we kind of envisioned, something unique and special if we're gonna go outside the Form-Based Code, and you've done it, and I appreciate that.
Councilmember Bierman?
I spent nine years of my life working in Midtown Oklahoma City, at the Midtown Plaza Court Building, which is the first thing I saw, I thought, when I saw this sign. And I cannot tell you how many photo sessions I saw up there on that crappy little parking garage, but climbed up onto the edge of the ledge, and you have this big beautiful sign behind you, and part of the Oklahoma City skyline, and it's really beautiful. And it's a destination spot for that reason, and although a strange one, anything that brings people to a building is a good thing. So, I was really glad to see that. I think it's gonna be really unique to downtown. I do think that we're going to be getting questions all the time of who Jay Ford is. So, maybe a little plaque on the building being like, "it's just personal, it's just personal", because I think people are gonna ask, "well, who was Jay Ford? And what was his relationship to downtown?" But, I also appreciate Councilmember Hall keeping us updated on her ongoing conversations with you. It really helped me feel more comfortable with the process while also deferring a little bit to the council member who not only spent so much time on this plan, but whose ward it is. So, I appreciated getting that feedback. I appreciated your willingness to work with her on that, and I really appreciate this sign. So, thank you all.
I will second everything my colleagues have said and, and add on that, uh, Councilmember Hall has shown us once again that if you think this job is going to ribbon cuttings and answering a few emails, you are sorely mistaken. Uh, so well done to everyone involved. I'm excited for this project as well. With that, the motion on the floors...
I still, I have, I, I can't help myself, you gotta, you gotta let me. Because this really has been a collaborative effort, and it's important to recognize that from Mr. Wishnick, Mr. Peacock, the legal team, um, our city staff, um, they were invaluable to getting us over the finish line. Um, Assistant City Attorney, um, Beth Mukala, um, Planning Director Jane Hudson, City Planner Anna E. Starr, who wrote an outstanding, um, staff report that really helped guide the way. And, um, you know, I think we've, uh, done an adequate job of really explaining why all of these exceptions are necessary, and how it goes to enhance the project. And, um, you know, there was no notice, as you, I mean, I mean, no protest, no, no one went to pre-development. Um, the other collaborative effort here was with Your Neighbor to the East, Dr. Gabriel Byrd, who also, um, you know, weighed in with some preferences that he had. And so, I think all in all, this is just an excellent example of what we can accomplish when we all work together towards a common goal. So, thanks to everybody for, um, your efforts, and I support this project.
All right, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance as amended on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon second reading as amended, um, unanimously with Councilmember Peacock abstaining.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon final reading as amended unanimously with Councilmember Peacock abstaining.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman, would you pop back there and grab Councilmember Peacock? While she's doing that, Ordinance Twenty-three, uh, or Item Twenty-three, Ordinance Twenty-Twenty-One dash Twenty-four, closing two public right-of-ways alleys as well as existing utility easements located in Block One of East University Edition. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Motion?
Second.
Is the applicant or representative of the applicant here to make a presentation?
Good evening, Mark Zidzow with Johnson and Associates, uh, in Oklahoma City, One East Sheridan Avenue. Um, this is a block that is owned entirely by the University of Oklahoma. Uh, it was, for, uh, last several decades, developed as a parking lot with the southern portion being undeveloped as part of some internal housekeeping. We've proposed to close two alleys that were located within the block. Now, they were no longer needed, given the block, uh, was being utilized as a parking lot. So, uh, we filed the application, we've worked with staff. Utilities that were located within the alley, uh, have been, uh, relocated. Uh, with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Hall?
Uh, really just more of a brief comment. Um, I appreciate, um, having you make the presentation tonight. This also is in Ward Four, and, uh, just is something that needs to be attended to and, and move forward.
Thank you. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon second reading unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Excuse me. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Did I skip somebody? Okay. Uh, the ordinance is adopted unanimously on final reading.
Thank you. Item Twenty-four, Ordinance Twenty-Twenty-One dash Twenty-nine, authorizing a special election in the City of Norman on the sixth day of April, 2021, to submit to registered voters the question of issuance of bonds in an amount not to exceed twenty-seven million dollars to be issued in series to provide funds for reconstructing, repairing, improving, and rehabilitating existing roads, streets, and intersections, including lighting, sidewalk, backpass landscaping, related drainage improvements, driveway reconstruction, and other related improvements, and levying and collecting an annual tax, in addition to all other taxes upon the taxable property for the payment of interest and principal on set bonds. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Mr. O'Leary for Director of Public Works to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the chance to make some comments. Uh, I'll be brief. Uh, you all have seen this, let me get through this last one here. And with me, too, are Streets Superintendent Tony Mensah. You all don't get to see Tony very often. He does all the heavy lifting on this program. And then Scott Sturts, our city engineer, provides a lot of engineering support and, uh, construction management for our program. So, again, we're talking about the Street Maintenance Bond Program. Uh, this is, if you approve this ballot ordinance tonight, you are approving the fourth five-year program. This all started back in two thousand and five. I think council and staff realized in the early two thousands we were falling way behind in our residential local street maintenance. And this was an attempt to kind of bridge that financial gap with a bond issue. This is an ad valorem bond issue, uh, that, uh, has a set mill levy that's remained the same over all four, uh, or all, all previous three programs. Um, might notice the voter approval, we think that's, that's notable. I think our citizens like this program. They keep voting for it each time, and I think that means that we're delivering on what we promised, and they like what they're seeing. So the first one was about eleven million dollars, about a fifty-four percent voter approval. Uh, valuation increased quite a bit there, got to nineteen million, and, and almost sixty-five percent approval rating, twenty-five million during the last three, uh, or the last five-year program, uh, that ended, that will end actually this spring, and that was sixty-seven percent approval. And we're proposing here for the next five-year program to have a twenty-seven million dollar program. Again, no new tax increases, this is a continuous mill levy. On the left side of the screen, there's a little, uh, bu, uh, pie chart that, that, from a survey we took back in two thousand and eleven. I guess it's about ten years old now, but essentially the question was to our citizens, this was during our comprehensive transportation plan development. The question was, where would you like us to put our dollars for, for transportation? And you can see, and this has been pretty consistent with our citizens, they want us to take care of what we have first, maintain what you have first, and then go on from there for other transportation priorities. So here's, here's the program. You all, I think, know most of this, but again, it is a neighborhood street program throughout the city. All wards are included. Uh, this is where we live. These are the streets where we live. These are not the arterial streets, or the collector's streets, or the special corridors. Those are typically handled with other bond issues. These are the streets where we live, and this is kind of basic street maintenance. These are overlays, concrete panel replacements, cracked ceilings, you name it. The, the kind of preventive maintenance things that we have to do to keep our streets in good order. We have o, over eight hundred miles of streets, public streets in Norman, which is an enormous amount for a, a tax base like ours. Most cities with eight hundred miles of streets have two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand, um, residents. Uh, so we, we have a very large street network. We're, we're hitting about a hundred and fifty to two hundred miles of that each year, or each five years with this program. Basic categories, urban asphalt, rural asphalt, urban concrete. We have a reconstruction program. We're going, when, when that street is just gone, it can't, you can't rehab anymore. We have to go in and reconstruct it. Very expensive. We're doing that today on Iowa Street, in a couple blocks from here. And then this year, or this, uh, program, we're, uh, suggesting to add a preventive maintenance program. This is, uh, pressure pavement on the left side of the screen, slurry seals, cracked ceiling. They're kind of inexpensive things we can do to streets that are not quite reaching that full rehab level, sort of like changing the oil in your car. If you change oil in your car, it's pretty cheap and fast, and it keeps you from having major engine repairs. That's what preventive maintenance will do on pavement. The other thing that's unique, I think, about this program is we provide a list of the streets. So when your constituents ask you, "what are you doing with this money?", in the ballot ordinance is a list of the streets we're going to do. Uh, we'll do all of those, and if there's money left over, we'll come back to council, and we'll probably do more street maintenance with that. And then documented results, I can show you that here in a minute. Uh, our partnership with Cleveland County is critical, uh, particularly District Two, uh, Commissioner Stacy. We work very closely with their staff and our staff to do, uh, pavement, pro, paving projects out there[1781.85] out there at a much lesser cost. So, here's how the previous three programs kind of laid out. You can see the, you know, the lane miles is somewhat consistent. It sort of grows a little bit, and then it kicks back depending on the level of work we're doing there. But you can see the way that the programs have been performed, and kind of the level of work that we're doing, almost 183 miles in the 2010 program. So, the 2126 program, it is a $27 million proposal, no new tax, so the mill levy will remain the same. Valuation goes up a little bit. You can see how the different categories are estimated here. These are all estimates. We'll do our best to get the bids to match those numbers. 15% for rural roads. I always want to point that out. It's important that, that was a goal of council years ago. We continue that goal. Most of that goes into Ward Five, but also, you know, there's rural roads in Ward Three, and up in Ward Eight, and Six, and so on. If we encounter, you know, unsafe bicycle, you know, grates and drainage structures, we fix those with the project. If there's minor drainage issues, we fix that with the project. No major drainage work, but minor work. We don't leave these streets in any kind of condition where there's standing water or, you know, drainage issues that might have been there before. So, here's kind of, excuse me, this mask is driving me crazy. Here's how the proposed program lays out. I won't go into the details. Happy to answer questions there, but we're going to try to touch about 152 miles of roads here. We're really proud of that program that our staff has put together, and you can, again, see how the dollars shake out. These are all our best estimates, and we're going to try to meet those as much as we can, year to year. I won't dwell here much, but just to say that when we select these streets, this is not me selecting the streets based on my judgment, or Tony, or even you all. This is selected using our pavement management program. We use a program that was developed by IMS, and we've had this system in place for over 20 years. And every year, we go back out, evaluate the conditions of those streets, run that through a pretty robust program, and we are selecting the streets for these programs based upon need. This is not based upon what we think, or what might be the best. This is a data-driven, need-based program, and I think that's so important to the, to the success, and I think the credibility of this program. Just a quick excerpt of what that program looks like, and I've got lots of details if you'd like to drill down. We actually do a report each year, sort of updating the condition of the streets. But we have a pavement condition index, PCI, is what we call that. And our goal back in 2004, 2005, was to get all of our, our average PCI in the city to 70, sort of a passing grade, if you will, a 70 grade, a C. I'm proud to say that this year, in 20, or in the 2020 report, our PCI is now 75. That doesn't mean our streets are perfect. We have plenty of streets below that number, and there's be plenty of work to do for decades to come, frankly. We'll never totally overcome this program because we're adding five and 10 miles of streets a year at the same time we're, we're doing this, this program. But that shows, I think, the documented results and the good that we have done over these years. It's a very gradual process. We might gain a point a year if we're lucky, but it does show that it's working. Our system is working, and we continue, as I said, to upgrade that data. So, if you ever have a constituent that wants to know why we haven't been to this street or that street, we can tell you, the PCI is 72, and it's coming up, or it's 65, or it's 42. We can tell you all the time where that is, and what we're trying to do with that data to incorporate into this program, or into your capital program. We also do street maintenance with capital dollars. So, here's the map of the entire program. It's a little bit overwhelming on the screen, but it, I think what it shows is the, is the, the depth of the program. We're everywhere in Norman. You can see the difference in the categories of work. You can see, frankly, not that we attempt to do this, but based on that need, you can imagine there's going to be a heavier influence in Wards Two and Four. Those are our oldest areas, oldest streets. They're always going to demand a little bit more attention than some of the newer developing areas. A little bit more this year in Ward, or this cycle in Ward Two. It just turned out that way. As I mentioned, again, I think one of the important things about this ballot ordinance as we go forward and talk to our voters is the, these lists. This is an example of, one of the lists that's in the, that's attached to the ballot ordinance. This would be the urban concrete streets. Here's the urban asphalt. And again, we can say exactly that we're going to go to 72nd Avenue Northwest, and we're going to work between Tecumseh and Rock Creek Road. We can also tell you what year we're planning to do that. So, this is a very prescriptive program, and one that I think the voters have appreciated. When, when they go to, to consider voting for this, they know how much money is going to be raised, they know what it's going to cost them, they know that it's not going to increase their property tax, and they know that where the dollars are going to be spent, and what the good that we're going to try to do with it. So, I think that's what's really critical about the voter support of this program. Here's the reconstruct, and then here's the preventive maintenance side. So, we were before the Council Planning Commission. That's a typo. That was actually August 20th of 2020. I think it was a virtual meeting. Several of you were there. You had your retreat, you talked about this. So, we came back with first reading on January 12th, second reading tonight. If you approve it, the clerk will deliver the notice to the election board tomorrow or the next day, and we'll be on our way to an April 6th election here for this bond program. Naturally, there'll be a campaign developed by the City Manager's Office on lease will help us to do that. And, you know, in the past couple of these, it's been a fairly straightforward campaign. People just buy into this program. They really like it, they understand it, the material is clear, and I think the goal is, is pretty concise. And so, we'll do anything we can to get the word out. We'll talk to any group that, that they wish to invite us. I think we got invited today to the Chamber of Commerce in a couple weeks, so happy to do that throughout the next couple of months. But that will be the next order of business, to get ready for the election, get the information out, and then hopefully have a successful election in April. That allows Mr. Francisco to sell the bonds, bring that sale back to you before the end of June, which makes this a no-new-tax initiative. We're just continuing that same mill levy. So, with that, we happy to answer any questions.
What would happen if it didn't pass, and we had to come back and create a new one later?
Hate to even think about it, Mayor, but yeah, you know, if it didn't pass, council would have to, I think, decide where you want to go with this. But certainly, our street maintenance program in neighborhoods would end. We just don't have enough capital dollars to do a fraction of this work. So, I think it would be noticed pretty quickly, certainly that first year, if we didn't, if we weren't able to come back and, and bring it back to the voters. But we hope that doesn't happen. That hasn't even remotely happened the last three times, because the voters have really been favorable to this. So, I think that's our job to get the word out and try to convince folks that this is another great five-year program like the other three.
I'm thrilled that there's no tax increases, no new taxes for this. People are still kind of nervous, given the nature of the world right now. What would happen, let's say, if, if council said, oh, let's push it back? Is there, is there a financial reason why we need to do this, at this timeline?
Yeah, and it's beyond me. Mr. Francisco's better to answer that question, but what he tells me is that if we aren't able to sell those bonds and get council to accept them before the end of June, it was no, it would no longer be a no-new-tax initiative. You would have to go back out and say, now, we're going to raise your ad valorem tax. And I think that no-new-tax message, I can only say, just based on my observation, is a very important message. People like to know that they're getting something without their taxes going up.
I agree. And timing is everything, and so this is well thought out, and I appreciate all of your efforts on this.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. I did notice that it looks like Ward Seven has nine projects. Very pleased to see that. One of them is a very, I say very, 50, 60s-ish neighborhood, Boyd View neighborhood. 12th Avenue Southeast, we've seen so much development along here. We improved the north half from Cedar Lane to Highway Nine. We improved Cedar Lane, but 12th Avenue Southeast, south of Cedar Lane, is still a kind of two-lane road, and several neighborhoods have developed along it. There is a, a large senior independent living center that's being built at the entrance of Covellstone Creek, so I was very excited to see that one on there. It definitely needs it. I also appreciate you mentioning how this list is developed, because I also noticed that my street's on here, so don't want anybody to think.
And we have, we've not spoken about that, huh?
Yes, I have not talked to Sean about that, but College Avenue, College Street, yes, is old concrete, lots of traffic on it from fraternities and sororities and things like that. I did have questions that staff might get back to me about is College Avenue between Brooks and Cruz is a, in really bad shape. There's several streets all throughout the city, but that's one I run across every single morning when I go to work, so.
Sure.
I noticed that was not, not on here, so. See, the, so again, just making sure everyone's aware about how the city goes about selecting which streets and when. And then, really, I just, I, just following your comments about no tax increase, and the fact that this has been used successfully to rehabilitate and extend the life of many of our neighborhood streets. The Hardy Rucker neighborhood in Ward Seven, which is the neighborhood across from the football stadium, for, by the Duck Pond area, for reference, many of the streets in that neighborhood have been addressed through the 2016 bond. I think George Street is still on the list, but several of them in the neighborhood have been fixed up. It's visible. Every time people pull out of their driveway, every time they come home from work, they see that improvement and that it's happened. So, that's why I think I would agree that this has been a very popular program, is that people can see it. It's right in their, it's maybe a headache when it's being built in front of your house. I've heard from some people on Iowa Street, so, but when it's done, it's, it's really worth it, I think. So, I appreciate staff's work on this, and I'm looking forward to promoting this for the next couple of months and getting it passed.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman. If I may, we'll, and we'll certainly look up the College Street section you mentioned, but want to mention too, to you, that you also have a fairly robust capital street maintenance program. So, many times, the projects that you're not seeing in here are in your capital maintenance program, and you'll see that here in a couple weeks when we present our proposals for the next year and that. So, we try to balance those two things, doing the same kind of work, although capital can go into other areas with a little less, a little different criteria here, but the College Street might end up being on that list instead of this one.
And just to clarify too, these are, these are not widening projects. That's what our other thing is for, but these are all rehabilitation, resurfacing, extending the life. We're not widening streets to four and five lanes of this program.
Exactly. And unfortunately, we're not also building sidewalks. We get that question from time to time on this program. Could you just add sidewalks? And there just isn't enough funding here, or enough acquisition of easements and right-of-ways. So, then maybe that's something for a future program, but this is all about the pavement, just the street pavement, and as you say, you said it well, extending that life, trying to get another eight or 10 years out of it before we have to reconstruct it at a much higher cost.
And the concrete one, that line, that is replacing individual panels. It's not necessarily, we're going to rip the whole street out, we're going to go in and find the ones that need to be.
That's exactly right. It's sort of a patchwork, although you'll notice in one of the slides, we did a whole lot more of the, of the panels this past time, but essentially going in and finding those concrete panels or sections that are showing the wear, or there might be a panel right next to it that's fine. And so, rather than reconstruct the whole thing, we're selectively taking the, the street section, and when it's done, it's a, it's a really nice-looking, finished, leveled concrete street.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
I just wanted to say thank you for explaining exactly how you determine what streets are going to be touched every time we do and extend one of these programs. For Ward Four, I can't even imagine what our streets would look like if we didn't have the benefit of this regular attention to our aging infrastructure with our, our streets and roads. So, I really appreciate that, and I, you know, this is, this is what cities do, and this is one of the better examples of how we do it in an efficient way in looking at the long-term maintenance and repair of our streets that we all use all across Norman. So, I sincerely hope that our entire community can get behind this vote, just as I have the others. This is a very popular program, so I really appreciate that. We're at that point where we need to take it to the voters again.
Thank you.
All right. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon second reading unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Mayor, Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon final reading unanimously.
Thank you. Now, on to item 25, Resolution 2021 dash 81, calling a special election for April 6th, 2021, for the street maintenance projects. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion.
Second.
This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further questions or comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted unanimously.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also point out that if we need a runoff election for the council elections for the council elections on February 9th, they will also be on the April 6th ballot. Uh, we've had a request for a restroom break. So, uh, let's take very brief. We have one more item left on the agenda tonight.
Good call.
All right. Welcome back. After that short break, we have one item remaining and it is item 26, Resolution 2021 dash 86, appropriating CARES Act reimbursement funding in the amount of $30,000 received from the state of Oklahoma from the general fund miscellaneous grant reimbursements account to be used for small business relief grants. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize City Manager Pyle to make a presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. The item before you, uh, will allow us to address a rounding issue with the, the, uh, distribution of small business and nonprofit recovery grants processed by Sarah Kaplan and Stacy Parker in our office. After all of the applications were scored, um, we looked for a natural break in, uh, those businesses, uh, who scored, uh, reflecting the biggest impacts from COVID-19, healthier at home orders, et cetera. And, um, several of them scored, uh, very close together. We saw a natural break at 79 applicants, which would have been about 790,000. Recognizing council had appropriated $1 million for the program, the next line we can draw is at 103 applicants. Uh, so we are $30,000 short of achieving the, um, the most accurate implementation of your goal and objective of providing a million dollars worth of assistance to our, uh, small business and nonprofit community. So the request was, we, we felt it would be, um, in alignment with council's direction to bring you back this request for an additional 30,000 as opposed to come in short with, uh, $790,000 worth of grants awarded. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Before we dive into questions, well, I guess we can all, uh, ask our questions and make comments. I would like to thank city staff for great work on the grant program. Sarah Kaplan, uh, you are a magician and, uh, we're lucky to have you on staff. And I also want to thank all of our small businesses and the Chamber of Commerce for reaching out for us. Um, it's, we know that there is a need and I'm anticipating that need will be further addressed tonight, but that need didn't, wasn't recognized just because of all of the emails. There were several councilors on here who had that conversation before the emails came in, and I want the community to recognize that. Councilmember Peacock, you were one of the first to send the emails. Uh, Councilmember Petron, you are also concerned in addition to businesses, making sure that people can pay their bills and rent, which as we've seen tonight from presentations, we had additional CARES funding that went that way, but that did not go overlooked by you. Councilmember Carter, Councilmember Holman, all of you had shared your desire to help small businesses through this tough time. And, uh, then we heard more from the community. So we have clear direction on the next steps. So are there any other comments from council regarding the, Councilmember Petron?
I have some residents that had some questions about the, um, the, where the applications went through and transparency purposes.
Yes.
Um, so one of them was, um, for the people who submitted an application and just didn't hear anything back and didn't know whether or not their application was actually even submitted. How do they, when they called up to the city offices, they weren't able to get the information that they needed. So we, can you guarantee me that there will be a change in how that process is done that should these businesses call tomorrow about their applications, that we can give them some sort of update of what's going on and where their application is in that pile?
Absolutely. Uh, Councilmember Petron, uh, with 79, uh, clearly falling within the appropriation provided by council, 79 letters went out, uh, right after the scores were assembled. We have the balance of the letters to get to 103 pending, uh, council's discussion tonight. Uh, if council approves an additional 30,000, those letters will go out tomorrow. If council provides any additional funding, those letters will also go out tomorrow. And however far down that list we're able to get with however much money council appropriates tonight, we will also send letters to the balance of the list saying, uh, you, you did not score, uh, high enough to obtain one of the grants. We're going to keep all that information on file pending, uh, information on the 1.9 trillion dollars being discussed in Washington DC right now. We do anticipate, uh, resources coming to the city of Norman. Once that, uh, discussion is finalized, we have no idea how many buckets of money or what strings will be attached to any of them. Uh, but we are in anticipation of additional resources. And when those, uh, unknowns become known, we'll bring that back to council. And if council has additional opportunities to support, uh, more applicants on that list, we can get those dollars out just in a, you know, matter of days. So all that communication can take place as early as tomorrow morning based on council's discussion tonight.
Okay. But they can, they will know, yes, we received your application and it's being considered.
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, and then there were several questions along the lines of what, um, like staff members or a committee or, um, internally how it was, the applications were processed. Can you speak to how that, when someone submitted an application and didn't just go into cyberspace, where did it go? And were there staff members that did that? Or was it a citizen committee?
So staff members assembled all the applications just in, in the order in which they were received until the application period was closed. Uh, at that point, a group of staff members, city attorney's office separated applicant, business, uh, and owner name and in, uh, address information from the actual, um, answers to the questions. So those were separated. The answers to the questions were handled by, uh, Sarah Kaplan and Stacy Parker. So they had no idea who filled out any one of those 628 applications. They were, uh, hand-entered into a giant spreadsheet that Stacy Parker had developed that put all of the weights to council's, uh, most mission critical questions, uh, built into it. And calculation was run and it literally gave us some fantastic demographic information and a very interesting bell curve in how those scores shook out. And then what we did is, is identified how many people were in each score column from zero to 100 and figured out how far those dollars would go. So we had, um, 79 applicants that scored 73 or higher. Um, or was it higher than 73, Sarah?
72.
72. And then, uh, there was another, uh, 21, 24 that scored, um, one score lower than that. Uh, that's that pending the, the additional 30,000. Once they were all scored, staff re-merged those two stacks and we were able to send out information to the first 79. Um, a couple of clarifying questions. We may have, uh, identified an unpaid fee or something. Just wanted to confirm that. And then also delivered them at W9 so they could provide their taxpayer ID number, which makes the finance department really happy when they're mailing out checks.
Okay. And then one of the questions was about, um, nonprofits versus small businesses? And if you could give kind of a breakdown of business types versus nonprofit types that, uh, were being, that were awarded grants?
If I'm not mistaken, we had 12 applicants that were nonprofits. Sarah brought some just fascinating demographic information that came from it. But what the demographic information showed us is your target audience absolutely, uh, took the opportunity to apply. The, uh, lower income census track businesses were a large portion of that applicant pool. But I'm remembering the number 12 in terms of nonprofit applications.
About 44.
Um, so I'll, I'll figure out what that number 12 was. So 44 out of 628 applicants were nonprofits.
Did 12 get awarded?
Um, maybe that's what it was. Yeah, we'll go back and check. But yeah, nonprofits and 12s is stuck in my brain. So I'll go find what that, what that is. But 44 out of 628 applicants were nonprofit.
And then is this kind of just a, all kinds of businesses? Or were there, um, any commonalities that you saw? Like, oh, there were a lot of hair salons or there was, you know?
Sarah, if you can, um, address those. I know you have the list handy and I'll try not to do it from memory, but, um, it was, it was, I think as we would have expected based on those businesses we recognized as being most immediately impacted.
Good evening. So of the 628 applications, I don't have the entire breakdown, but I have the top five. It was a really wide swath, um, of different types of industries. So about 14.6% were from the accommodation and food services industry, uh, 14% from healthcare and social assistance, uh, 11.8 from retail trade, 11.6 from professional scientific and technical services, 11 and, 11.5 from arts, entertainment and recreation. And then down from there, I don't have the rest of the numbers on the sheet, but pretty much every NICS code was represented in that.
Very good. Very good. Um, just make sure I have, oh, earlier tonight, um, Councilmember Carter spoke about landlords. Um, if in these applications there are landlords that have applied for small business, can, um, we reiterate that they could go to the CBDG fund as well? And so maybe free up some of the grant money if more is approved by council?
We absolutely have that information now that those lists have been re-merged and we would be happy to make that, uh, additional guidance and direction to those landlords to say, if this bucket of money didn't work out for you, we have another opportunity for you here through CDBG. Thank you. We'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. And I think that that covers what my constituents, the questions that they had. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember, let's go, just go down the line. All right.
So I have, um, one question coming from constituents and then two questions coming from me. Um, the first is because I couldn't, I didn't want to relay information that I didn't have 100% verified. So that's why I'm asking, how did we review documentation of claims of revenue loss from the year prior?
Um, so what we did, and we knew there were businesses that didn't necessarily have year-to-year data, uh, in the application program. Everything is done, uh, with a signature over the statement that, uh, this is done with a, uh, under the penalty of perjury if any of this information is found to be, uh, inaccurate or incorrect. Uh, we did verify those businesses exist and low and behold, we found a couple where applications were submitted and there is absolutely no record such a business existed. Uh, we made contact and asked for a couple of pieces of information that would absolutely solidify a business exists. And we got yelled at and hung up on and we thought, ah, well, that's probably a pretty solid hint. Everything else was done, uh, literally in the honor system, uh, very much like it was done in some of the initial PPP and SBA type loans, uh, where they didn't ask a lot of questions. Uh, but we did verify that those first 103 are absolutely, uh, existing businesses, uh, operating, owned and managed here in Norman.
Well, I would say as someone who has filled out a ridiculous amount of PPP and EIDL paperwork, I do know exactly what they ask for. And unless you were only looking for the small level grant, they did actually require documentation. Um, a follow-up to that is I had two people ask me if they sense or suspect or have evidence that someone was not entirely honest on their application, who should I point them to?
Uh, I would say if you direct them back to our office, that would be a conversation we would have with the city attorney's office, uh, and go take a peek at that line under penalty of perjury. We would take that very seriously.
Appreciate that. And so then I have two questions. Do we have any idea of how far down in points we're willing to go? Cause once you start getting down into the 10 and 20-point category, you're really not demonstrating a whole lot of need?
Um, it, 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 I think, um, the number, and that we had that number this afternoon, uh, somewhere in the range of a score of 50 would consume about $2 million of additional appropriation.
Okay. I think I would like to get a sense of what a score of 50 looks like in terms of an application, what kinds of questions they've answered, exactly what other opportunities they've had for PPP or rent or mortgage assistance. I mean, I feel like once you get to, once you get to 50, it's really kind of hard to demonstrate too much additional need.
We did receive, um, some additional information from an applicant that would fall into the second 100, uh, most impacted applications. Um, they had received a, a revenue loss of, uh, over 50%. Did receive PPP, which, you know, they said lasted about, um, eight weeks. Did receive a loan which they have to pay back for about $50,000 for some technology to help them, uh, stay afloat during the pandemic. And they had received some landlord concessions in, in rent or lease payments. And they would have fallen in the second 100 most heavily impacted. They did have, uh, minority-owned, uh, business points scored, uh, a pretty heavy impact from the loss of income, but did receive other forms of assistance and they were in the second tier 100.
Okay. And then my last question is, there was just not even, setting aside the 1.9 trillion number that seems to be thrown around about any future stimulus, there already was a just sub $1 trillion stimulus made at the end of December, which also included new rounds of PPP which launched, launched last week and included a dedicated application period for people or businesses that did not previously receive any PPP. So how are we going to be reevaluating our current slate of applications considering, in terms of the data, they'll be a little bit out of date because you'll have businesses that have applied for and have at least received notice that they will be receiving PPP in the coming weeks?
So excellent, uh, scenario to be identified. Um, depending on when, uh, information is delivered to the cities and counties about the 1.9 trillion and what opportunities may be made available, our ability to, uh, say, okay, we've got, uh, potentially, you know, 300 applications left. Uh, they were less impacted than the first group council was given. group council was able to support, follow-up questions could be appropriate. It could be done a couple of ways. We could reach out to that same group of 300, ask them for some additional information. They're a known quantity, a finite group. We have their mailing addresses now. Or you could potentially open up a new application period for people who did not qualify for PPP round one or round two, and then you know what their impacts would be. So that is an excellent opportunity for council to reevaluate and potentially retool as those new rounds of PPP dollars begin to flow into the local economy.
Yeah, I mean, and my question is more about this current batch of applications. Are we going to be requesting any follow-up documentation from them?
We'd be happy to reach out to that applicant pool.
Have you applied for this second round of PPP? Because if so, that changes your score.
Correct.
And so, you know, I think it would be really important to find that out. Again, not that we really have a way to hold them accountable unless someone, a whistleblower in their organization, decides to bring some information forward. But I do think it's appropriate, and being good stewards of our dollars, to make sure that we ask the question, considering the context has changed a little bit from when we first approved this program.
Well, and recognizing those priorities are council's priorities, as soon as we get wind, we'd love to bring that conversation back to you. And it would be... We'll be much more efficient this time around than we were the first lap in totally uncharted territory. I feel very confident in our ability to administer any change like that, just in a matter of days.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hall?
Just a couple of constituent questions as well. I think some of the source of the confusion of the amendment that we have before us right now is for this additional $30,000. So literally as we speak, there are approximately 20-some applicants who have been awarded the grant, but they really don't know it yet. Is that right?
Depending on council's action tonight, if council were to not provide an additional 30,000, one potential recommendation council could make or modification is to say, adjust the award amount. So maybe it's $9,200 to the balance to make sure all remaining applicants, the remaining 24, get something. They just may get some lesser amount, so we fall within the million-dollar appropriation provided by council. So you can kind of adjust that scale on either end. We can add more money, or we could reduce the awards by a little tiny amount for that remaining group that didn't score quite as high.
So the $30,000 amount actually makes whole those last 24 because they have the exact identical score.
Same score.
Okay. Because I've been contacted by quite a number of small, you know, of people who have applied, and they think they... I mean, they think they're done because they haven't heard anything, and there literally are a few out there that will, you know, if we... Assuming that we approve this, that will find out tomorrow morning that indeed they did qualify.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's been a big source of confusion. Then the other, probably the most common question I've been asked is, when will we release who actually qualified for the grants?
So that information will become public record, and I will look to the city attorney to put together that communication and whoever's interested in seeing that information, how we can make that available.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Foreman?
I was just going to ask the same thing about when we would make it public. And if you could send all the demographic information, the percentages and all that stuff to council, I'd be interested in seeing.
Love to. It really is... I'm glad Sarah had the foresight to put those types of questions in. And it did help make sure we were on the right track, gathering the right information to answer those questions. And the information when it comes out, it's very powerful data, and it's amazing the value we get from data. But it really gives you kind of a good cross-section about what your small-business community looks like. When council identified small business at 35 or fewer employees, I think you were spot-on based on what we gathered from this application process. So absolutely, we'll ship all that information out to council first day in the morning.
Councilor Peacock? I have comments, not questions. Okay. Councilwoman Holman?
All right. Well, I appreciate everybody's comments here and this discussion. I do have a proposed amendment that we could make here tonight. I appreciate my colleagues, Councilmember Peacock and Carter specifically, for helping to craft this specific amendment. And I think, based on some of the information we've received in this meeting tonight, item number 20, for example, the additional money for rental assistance and to help address those type of needs that we know we have. We've talked about storm reimbursement and things like that, which have also been concerns, I think, that we've all had about, you know, be holding off on the CARES Act money to see. But I think we've kind of... We've gotten those questions resolved from my perspective. And I would offer an amendment tonight that we... Basically, I would move that Section 7 of Resolution R-2021-86 be amended to reflect an appropriation in the amount of $1.91 million for a total of $2.91 million instead of 30,000 from the general fund miscellaneous reimbursements account to the miscellaneous CARES Act business aid account. This amendment will provide $10,000 grants to 291 businesses scoring 55 or greater on our scale. The selection criteria was weighted to give assistance to small locally-owned and operated businesses in Norman. Our local businesses are hurting, and the time is of the essence. I think we all have heard that from our constituents, that we... These businesses need it now. And that is the amendment I would offer tonight.
I would second that amendment. All right. Now it's time to make any final comments. I think Councilmember Holman said it perfectly. Well, I appreciate you leading the way on that one, Councilmember Peacock. My pleasure. The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Roll for your floor is the amendment.
Sorry, I was just going to take care of that one. Sorry, we have an amendment on the floor. Are there questions or comments from council regarding the proposed amendment?
I just had a question from City Legal. This is just a CYA question. As we know, we have been sued by the FOP for changing an amendment on the dais that had to do with not proper notice or something like that to the public. I'm very supportive of this, but I want to make sure that, in your legal opinion, that I'm okay to vote to support this.
Yes, just like you all amended the CCPUD earlier, you can't amend this item. There's an automatic stay. Anytime a municipality is ruled against for 30 days, and then within that 30-day time period, we appealed that case, and so the stay continues. So the order of the district court is not enforceable at this time.
Okay, so even though... You understand why I'm asking it.
Yes, absolutely. We believe we will be successful in the appeal. We've been talking to multiple partners across the state from various sides of the issue that all agree with our interpretation. And so we feel confident enough that we have not changed the way that we're doing business and the way we've done business for many years.
Okay. I'm sure small businesses will thank you for that.
I was just so darn excited. Are there any other council comments or questions regarding the amendment? Seeing none. Now, the motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution as amended. Madam Clerk, will you please call?
The motion on the floor is for the amendment first, and then we'll do the resolution as amended.
Yes.
So this is a motion on the amendment. Councilmember Biermann?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Clearly, I keep trying to pass it without special steps, so...
The amendment passes unanimously. Now you're back to the resolution as amended.
All right. Final vote of the night, and I think I have it correct this time. The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution as officially amended. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Biermann?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye, aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The resolution as amended is a... Passed unanimously.
Thank you. All right. This meeting is adjourned.